Alright, Yateh Benet, Vice President Eliza here. Commandant in the Slack, Tohannabas's team, Do Commandant, Dashi Tei, Klaeshi Dashi Nell. It's good to be with you all this morning on this March 4 Town Hall update. And we do have some more updates for you, vaccine information, variant information. And I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but we have an esteemed cast of our health professionals here with us here. And as we always do, let's open up in prayer. I will give an update and then introduce Dr. Laura Hammond. So, thank you for joining us again. Yeah, Deen God, Oh Ni God, we thank you, Lord, for the moisture, Lord, that is falling on our earth, Lord, the earth that you created, Father, for us, Lord. We thank you that our animals are blessed and that the land is being given a fertile start, Lord, for the first planting this spring. Lord, we pray for a bountiful harvest, Lord, this year. May you be glorified by that. We pray for this Town Hall update, Lord. May the people of the land be blessed from the information, the data, Lord, and as you continue to heal us, Lord, Father, deliver us from this pestilence, Lord, as you said you would. We thank you and ask for your wisdom in which to conduct this meeting, Lord. Be with all of our presenters, Lord. Be with our president, be with our health professionals, Lord, our first responders, Lord, the nurses, doctors, and health practitioners, Lord. May they all be found safe on this day. Thank you that you are keeping them safe, Lord, for they are a protector. They are the warriors that are protecting the people, Lord, in this fight against this pandemic. So, we thank you again. Thank you for our protection. We'll pray, we'll work like it depends on us, but we'll pray that it depends on you. So, we thank you, Yateh and God, for all these things we say in your most powerful, precious name, Jesus in Nazarene, amen, amen. So, we thank you all again for joining us here. We have so many meetings that the President and I are on, and this is no different, but we appreciate the ability for us to give you timely updates. And so, I'll start again giving my updates here real quick and then pass it on to Dr. Laura Hammond here. Introduce her real quick here. So, our numbers in Arizona, as you know, numbers have been declining for the last several weeks, and the numbers are looking more promising than ever, but we continue to maintain that you keep your diligence in protecting yourself, your family, by wearing masks, practicing social distancing and the like, continuing to wash your hands, sanitizing your hands in all common touch areas and the like. So, nothing really changes other than we have vaccines rolling out. We also have declining numbers, which again is the temptation that we all face, that we could, you know, release our kind of, you know, not be as diligent in lessening our participation in the protocols, honoring those for our family. So, we appreciate you all. We continue to pray for you all, Shidine, all across the land. Arizona, total positive cases since last year, and again, we're a year into this pandemic, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand one hundred and eight cases with one thousand one hundred and fifty-four new cases. So, it still hasn't let go of us just yet, and so we continue, need to continue to advocate for everybody's safety. Apache County, ten thousand five hundred and eleven cases total with eight new ones as of yesterday or this morning. Navajo County, fifteen thousand six hundred and eighty-nine with eleven new cases. So, those numbers look promising, and this is immediately in our region. So, continue to do your best, Shidine. Coquenino County rounding out the tri-county area of those counties within the Navajo Nation, sixteen thousand six hundred and forty-eight with thirteen in new cases. So, the new cases continue to decline and we'll continue to receive that with all positivity and continued prayers as well. New Mexico, one hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight total cases this last year with three hundred and fifty-nine new cases. So, a little bit better, more promising than Arizona. So, continue that in New Mexico. San Juan County, northwest corner of New Mexico, thirteen thousand five hundred and forty-nine with eight new cases. Gallup McKinley County rounding out the Mexico counties that touch on Navajo, twelve thousand and fifty with six new cases. So, kudos to the state of New Mexico. Utah, three hundred and seventy-two thousand seven hundred and eight positive cases this last year with seven hundred and twenty-nine new cases. So, continue to be safe. San Juan County there, southeastern Utah, one thousand eight hundred and fifteen with four additional new cases. So, good job out there. And the Navajo Nation reporting from the Utah-Navajo Health System, total cases one thousand and sixty-three since last March, so one year into this, with zero or no new cases reported. So, we appreciate those numbers. Thank you, Adam, for providing those numbers from our surrounding states. I believe you all need to know what it looks like around us. We know that, we do refrain from traveling out abroad, but we know that a lot of our citizens have to. We have jobs out abroad and school and different things like that. So, again, we do know, not being naive, but continue to pass along the vital message to stay home, stay safe, save lives. And so, here we go. U.S. officials are expecting the country to receive enough COVID vaccine for all adults who want it by the end of May, a couple of months right before expected. So, you know, the numbers keep changing and all hands on deck attitude and urgency of this pandemic has got everybody working and the numbers and the collaboration has been at the highest level. Drug maker Merck will also help produce, and they are rivaling what Johnson &amp; Johnson, their newly approved one-shot vaccine that is out there. So, again, they're partnering, and so when you get collaboration between two drug companies, this is very much like a partnership that we've seen in the past and has only rivaled for the work that many companies and corporations, the private sector joining, the government sector had done since World War II. And so, this is a great thing, and so they're making a great change and progress is very evident. As some states are deciding that masking or distancing are no longer required, the Navajo Nation is warning against restriction fatigue and encourages our Navajo citizens to keep up the practice for the sake of public health. So, again, we're all in this together. The American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, the U.S. House of Representatives recently passed the American Rescue Plan Act on February 27th. Thank you for that. The legislation that would provide three hundred and fifty billion dollars in direct federal assistance to state, territorial, and tribal and local government in response to the coronavirus disease of 2019 public health emergency and ensuing economic fallout. So, more aid is coming, so we appreciate that. Twenty billion of that is devoted to tribal government. We are thankful for that. With one billion allocated equally across all governments, all 574 federally recognized tribes, and also nineteen billion of that is allocated through a process to be determined by the Secretary of Treasury. And just so you know, the Navajo Nation is advocating for population, land mass, and also, you know, how this pandemic has hurt our tribal nations. And so, that'll be decided by the Secretary of the Treasury. So, again, advocating from all levels, not only from here in Winderock in the Navajo Nation, but also our Washington office there lobbying with all those that are helping tribal nations, also the various, you know, like NCAAI and Coalition of Large Tribes. Everybody is advocating at a feverish pitch, so we appreciate all of their efforts here. The legislation will extend unemployment benefits and provide another round of stimulus checks, feed the hungry, help small businesses, boost vaccine distribution and school reopening, and provide more rental assistance and eviction protection. So, again, those are what, those items are all what's coming down the pipe here. However, it looks like it being rolled out is being talked about right now in the halls of Congress, on the congressional floor of the House and the Senate. So, continue to be in prayer for that. What does that look like when the final distribution is tallied and given to the Navajo Nation and other tribes? So, we appreciate your prayers for that. Because you know, our government leaders here, opposite of President, Vice President, our Washington office, also the 24th Navajo Nation Council, and our DOJ are chiming in again readily at this here. So, just want to leave you with an encouraging word here. We will continue with yesterday's agenda and yesterday's failures, or we reassert our ideas and our standards. Again, our standards are rooted in our beliefs that our elders have placed on us, right? Also, our beliefs here from our faith-based aspect here, whether you're Christian traditional or Native American church, you all have those standards which are very high, and we need to maintain those. And if you are weak in that, simply revisit those talks with your elders, with your family, also with your pastors and your practitioners. There is a way and a method that seems right to a man, but in its folly. So, God is saying that he wants full recognition in all this, the Creator of heaven and earth. So, you know, and I know, we just have to hit our knees and pray, lift up prayers for not only ourselves, but for all the nations and for government and leaders and just everything. This pandemic has touched everybody. There's no one that's left untouched by this pandemic. We're all in this together, but we will reaffirm our faith and renew our purposes here. This is a time for choosing here, so choose who you will serve, right? As for me and my house, we will serve the Lord, amen, amen. So, continue to be, stay healthy out there, stay healthy, be prayerful, and return stronger. As you know, President Jonathan Nez and I have been saying and advocating this timely message and routine message. We're hoping to be redundant, we're hoping to be, you know, continuing to say the same thing, but if we have to set this one year aside, let's invest it the right way, let's become more prayerful, let's become better citizens, better family members, better lovers of all of those people that are out there that we pray for, right? Consider others more highly than ourselves, and let's, you know, continue to seek our Creator God, our heavenly Father, while he may be found, and let's love our neighbor as ourself. Those are the two greatest commandments. So, appreciate you all, thank you for chiming in. I want to introduce right now Dr. Laura Hammond. She's the Associate Professor of Johns Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health. She's also the Director of Infectious Disease Prevention Program for the Center of American Indian Health. So, we appreciate her. She's going to give us updates on all of this pertinent data that we're seeing and the vaccine and also the variations, and so she's going to talk about all those. So, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Laura Hammond.
Thank you, Vice President. Yateh Shei Laura Hammond, Yana Shei, Johns Hopkins Center for American Indian Health, Banash Nish. I'm going to share my screen and, as Vice President said, talk about some of the updates for vaccine, which I think we'll hear later on from IHS more about and from President more about that, but give a brief update on that as well as talking a little bit more about the variants that everybody has been hearing so much about. Eli, can you tell me which, what you're seeing on my screen?
I can see your PowerPoint.
Great, okay, super, thank you. So, the, I think everybody has heard a lot of information obviously about COVID vaccines, and the Navajo Nation is certainly leading the efforts right now across the country really and rolling vaccine out to protect its citizens. The vaccine offers us benefits in that it can protect not only the individual by preventing infection or reducing the severity of illness, but also by benefiting the community, reducing transmission and leading to healthier communities. There are now three vaccines that are available in the United States, and the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is recently arrived on the Navajo Nation. So, we have two mRNA vaccines, one by Pfizer and one by Moderna, and then a new vaccine called the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, which also works by helping stimulate the body to make antibodies against that spike protein that's on the outside surface of the coronavirus. The vaccine helps us to make those antibodies so that if we get exposed to the virus, then we will be protected and be better able to fight that off. There are two unique things about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine that I wanted to mention to people. One is that it is a single-dose vaccine, so this can be very helpful, especially for populations that may be homebound or very remote where it's hard to get in for that second dose. So, this is a single-dose vaccine that is available to people eighteen and older, and it can be stored at regular refrigerator temperatures. It doesn't need a freezer or an ultra-cold freezer. So, that also means that it has advantages for being able to be used in more remote settings where those ultra-cold freezers might not be available. All three of these vaccines are highly efficacious. They all have the chance of temporary side effects, including pain at the site of injection, low-grade fever, headache, and fatigue, but all of them provide very good protection against COVID-19 disease. I think you'll hear updated numbers on vaccinations from President later on, but Navajo Nation has, as of March 1st, data administered over one hundred and thirty-five thousand doses, and there are forty-eight thousand eight hundred people who had received two doses, which gives us among the highest coverage for vaccination in the country, and I think is definitely contributing to the steeply declining rates of disease that we're seeing. I mentioned one of the benefits of immunization is this idea of herd immunity or stopping transmission. Without vaccination, the spread of COVID-19 in the community is uncontained. This is a new virus that people don't have immunity to, so it can spread very quickly, and that's what you see in this picture. One person becomes infected, which is designated here by red, and they can very quickly spread to all of the susceptible members of the community around them. With vaccination, which is what you see in the picture on the right, people become immune and the spread of COVID-19 in the community is contained. Even if one person gets sick, transmission is not widespread because people have been vaccinated, and the more people who are vaccinated, the more protected the community will be. We don't know at this point the precise percentage of people who need to be vaccinated in order to achieve herd immunity, but we expect that this is a fairly high percentage, you know, above eighty percent, potentially even above ninety percent of the population that needs to be vaccinated in order to achieve this herd immunity. So, it's very important to continue to encourage people to come and get vaccinated, to protect themselves and their community. A recent survey that was done by the Urban Indian Health Institute found that the primary motivation for people who were asked about willingness to get vaccinated was a strong sense of responsibility to protect the native community and to preserve cultural ways. And I think this is an important message, and I know is one of the main reasons that vaccine coverage has been so high on Navajo Nation, because people do feel this responsibility to protect the community. I want to switch now to talking about COVID-19 variants, unless, Eli, I don't know if there are any questions that have come through that you want me to try to address, and maybe we can, you can let me know. Okay, I'll carry on to talking about the COVID-19 variants, which we're hearing so much about, and I want to, I want to take us back to some basic understanding of just the biology of the coronavirus. And the coronavirus, like all living things, has a genome, which is the DNA or the RNA instructions that it uses to replicate and that it tells, that it uses to make proteins. The coronavirus has, as opposed to humans which have DNA, the coronavirus has an RNA genome, and it's made of these bases called adenine, guanine, cytosine, and uracil. You can just think of these as letters. The order of the letters determines how the proteins are built. It's like a blueprint for building a house. So, it's that order of those letters that determines how proteins are built and how different parts of the virus are constructed. As a virus replicates, when somebody gets infected, the virus enters the cells and the virus begins to replicate. And as it replicates, sometimes it makes mistakes and it inserts the wrong letter. These typos are called mutations, and you can see an example here where we started off with this sequence of letters for this coronavirus. It replicated, and when it replicated the first time, it did it perfectly. Everything's in exactly the same sequence or order, but the next time it replicated, it had a little typo here. Instead of putting in a U here on the last letter of that sequence, it put in a G, and that's the source of variants. When we change that sequence of letters, that can impact the proteins that are then made. So, the coronavirus genome has those thirty thousand bases or letters of RNA, and as the virus spreads from person to person, it can randomly accumulate more mutations. Through this process, different variants can emerge. So, here on this slide, you see the top picture showing the normal original sequence of the coronavirus virus, these thirty thousand letters, and these are different proteins, different sections of the sequence of letters and code for different proteins. Here's the section that encodes for that spike protein, which is around the outer surface. And you can see here, one of the very first mutations that was detected was a change here. Out of the thirty thousand letters, there was one change here at the one hundred and eighty-sixth letter that led to a mutation. And so, you can imagine as this virus is spreading from people to people and replicating over and over and over again, and all of the different people that it has infected, there are many mutations that have emerged. And like we said, those, that sequence of letters is the blueprint for building proteins. So, if there are changes in that sequence of letters, then it can change how these different proteins are made and how they are built and the shape of the proteins. The process for sequencing the strains is that when a sample is collected and somebody is detected as having COVID-19, the PCR test that's done, that diagnostic laboratory test that's done, if it's positive for the virus, then that viral RNA can be extracted from the swab, and that sequence of letters for the coronavirus can be sequenced. We can figure out the letter, the order of the letters, and then we can compare the order of the letters from that sample to the, all of the other sequences that have been determined, and that can help us to understand how the virus is being transmitted and if certain sequences or certain variants are causing more severe disease or are more transmissible. This doesn't have anything to do with human DNA, and it's an important clarification that I want to make. This is just viral RNA that is extracted. So, it's just sequencing that order of letters in the SARS-CoV-2 virus. As the virus is replicated and spread around the world, thousands of variants have occurred. Some of the variants emerge and then they disappear. Some persist. Some variants act very similarly to the main virus, the original virus. Some will act differently. They may spread more easily or less easily. They may cause milder disease or more severe disease. And in the United States, there are, this graph that's shown, being tracked by CDC, shows three important variants that have been detected. One that was first identified in the UK, the one that was first identified in South Africa, and another that was first identified in Brazil. and another that was first identified in Brazil. And you can see they have these sort of funny names, B117, B1351, which just helps describe where the mutations are occurring and what mutations have been detected as part of that strain. But all three of these have been reported in the United States. In the Four Corners area, we have the UK variant reported in all four states that surround the Navajo Nation. Not shown on this graph from the CDC website is the California variant, which people may have heard about as well. And the California variant has also been detected in all four states that surround the Navajo Nation and is increasingly more common among the strains that have been detected. This one has caused some concern because it appears to spread more easily. It doesn't, at this point, seem to cause more severe disease, but it can spread more easily. So what concerns do people have about these variants? As I just mentioned, they may spread more easily. They may reduce the effectiveness of the COVID-19 vaccines or other treatments that are available. And they might make it so that it is difficult for us to detect the coronavirus once somebody is infected. When we do coronavirus tests, what those tests are looking for are different parts of the coronavirus to see if somebody has that infection. And if there are mutations in the parts that the tests are looking for, then that may make it harder to detect the infection. So researchers are actively working to understand the variants, what they mean for testing and treatment and prevention methods. And I want to show an example here of just how that might look. As we talked about, all three vaccines that we have available to us now tell our bodies to make antibodies to the spike protein. If we get exposed to the coronavirus, then our antibodies bind to the spike protein and block infection. So here's a picture of the coronavirus. Here are all the different gene, sorry, the RNA sequence or the sequence of letters that code all of these different proteins, including the spike protein. So if there's mutations in this spike protein, that could affect the ability of these antibodies to bind to and block the coronavirus. The Navajo Epidemiology Center is leading efforts to do strain surveillance for Navajo Nation so we can understand the variants that are present and if they're contributing to a higher number of cases and deaths, to track transmission routes, to detect mutations quickly, to prevent the spread of new strains, and to identify any mutations that could avoid detection by diagnostic tests or that could affect the potency of the vaccines. People have asked, are the variants causing more severe disease? And as I mentioned, we're really working to understand this right now. It's possible that that may be the case. It's also possible that some variants could cause milder disease. But so far, the main concern is an increase in transmissibility. Even if a virus isn't causing more severe disease, just the fact that if it's spreading more easily, it will result in more cases and therefore more hospitalizations and more deaths. So we really need to do everything we can to prevent the spread of these variants. As I mentioned, so far, the studies suggest that the current vaccines will still work well. This is being closely monitored, and all of the vaccine companies are working on booster doses of the vaccine that could be targeted towards these variants, should they emerge in a way and cause reduced effectiveness of the currently available vaccines. So this is what I just mentioned, that these updated vaccines could potentially be given as booster doses, and that's something that's being evaluated right now. But the most important thing is the best way to prevent spread of the variants is strict compliance with all of the mitigation strategies. I know people feel really grateful that vaccines have been out, and they will provide protection. But that protection is not 100%, and we don't yet know if the vaccines will protect people from having a mild infection in the nose that could be spread to other people. So even if vaccinated, it's still very important to comply with the public health mitigation strategies. We need people who are symptomatic to get tested and all close contacts to get tested, to maintain physical distancing, use of masks, hand hygiene, and of course, vaccination. The more people who are vaccinated, the fewer people that will get infected and the fewer chances the virus will have to mutate. So by getting vaccinated, you're not only protecting yourself and your community, but you're also preventing that virus from having additional chances to mutate. And of course, again, this is a reminder card that gets at that same point, that after vaccination, we have to continue the three Ws: wearing a mask, washing distance, and washing hands frequently. And I think now I'll turn it back over to President Nez for further updates. Oh, Eli, sorry, I'm just seeing two questions that came through, and I'm happy to answer those. Do people who had COVID-19 vaccines still need to be vaccinated? It is recommended for people who had, sorry, people who had COVID-19 illness still need to be vaccinated. And the answer to that question is yes, it is still recommended for people who had COVID illness to be vaccinated because having had COVID illness will provide protection for some period of time, but the duration of that protection is unknown. And the protection afforded by vaccination will be more complete. So people who had COVID illness do still need to be vaccinated. They can wait up to 90 days after their illness if they choose to do so. But they can proceed with getting vaccinated as soon as they have recovered from their COVID illness and they are out of isolation, waiting at least two weeks after that COVID illness and then being eligible to get vaccinated. And the second question was about what the Johnson and how the Johnson &amp; Johnson information about the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. And the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is different than the mRNA vaccines that we've talked about before. So the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine is called an adenovirus vector vaccine, but it works on the same principle in that it is helping your body to stimulate antibodies to that spike protein. Thank you, and over to you, President.
All right. Here, Dr. Hammitt. Kodo, nijehenzi, do laana adikid, nijekudala. Eshido kodo, naltsoskade ilneto, le shikero shina. Ado, haneegi shee, naltsoskade ilyavu shee, kodo, nijekude ilneto le. Chee kodo, nijedeshna Jonathan Nez, ado, di na kijidodo di jin da aneshona ekon. Hane, ado, i, yike, nijedene, ncharlshin yindalne shigaya. Jue, yikijen, ndeipaha noh, otah sa, chudeel. Jue, axi, ni di kon, nalni, do, dukosnshagin asta, edza, ta, bahatsi. Do, bikijen, eendelne, jue, do, e, yike, nijedene, bedatolna, ta, da ni tzeni gi. E beni na ekon, allahndeitle, do, hane, nijekondeel, i shikero shina. Ado, kodo, shina, Vice President. Nijekha zidoo, tsudzenye, ncharila, do, hane, nijekuiila. Eya, kuijen, kodo, hane, le, hadaszogo, hane, nijekondali, ingi, e, ya. Ya hadzi, do, nijekuiila, hanae, nelte, e, di hadaszogo, e, do, dukosnshagin asta, edza, ta. Bedatolna, allahajibiyet. Nijekodo, kodo, banashne, nebekeya, paka. Ado, konda, e, adaneye, aila beni na, banahalne, ta, shillnoda. Oye, di nalni, gi, e, nachi kudeelne, do, banahalne, e, akojia, hanalne, ta, da, noh, da, yada. Akoh, hane, e, ya, yesin, nijekondeel. Ado, nijekondeel, e, hee shee, e, aita, do, nijekaschane, dalte, da, ndanosh, nda. Ta, nijekodo, nengi, e, jue, e, dahalongo, da. E beni na, kuijen kon, ncharneho, ahho, e, bandahuilne. So e shee beni, jue, otah, e, hane, nijelpaazun, do, kon, nijekene, nijedene, jue, aschane, dalte. Ako, di, yahishniye, da, kene, allah, nchariya, yahishniye, da, jue, nijelpaadazun, e, di, yolkhalne. Di, marchbiyet, na, di, na, ke, damiliyajudo ba, na, di, yechaha, da, yahishni. Kade, na, di, na, 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 kijenez, na, di, damiliyajudo ba, na, di, talagona, yolkhal. Ako, di, marchbiyet, le, asla, zada, kon, da, shun, di, zada, kon, da, shun, yolkhalne, di, marchbiyet. Eya, allah, nchara, shee, do, le, yahishnijen. Ado, kono, nijekene, nijedene, allah, altsajid, deni gi, do, e, kene, ajen, allah, nchara. So e on, nijelpaazun, do, le, do, na, di, naste, damiliyajidoo ba, tebenez, di, do ba, naste. Naste, di, do ba, di, nelte, o, ekon, nijekene, nijedene, kon, bedatolna. Ado, dukosnshagin, e, di, naste, zada, huel, yegi, e, kon, yishna, krego, nijedas, krego, da. Jue, e, kon, ada, di, neyashki, e, roshina, ada, daholya. Mask chudal, nijela, do, tchale woshpet, chadakhis. Hand sanitizer, zda, tegi, da, chudal, ina, kuijen. Ado, ado, e, yedegol, jue, yadalte, do, ndahsazune. Ado, ahho, gane, ndahso, tchaha, ne, jue, e, a, e, na, nti. Ben, da, ni ti, di, jin, jua, allah, nchara, jua, di, ah, otah, shi, e, nchara, da, ztsi. Shi, allah, nchara, na, shi, e, na, ke, akhond, hadaino, shni, do, e. Nijechin, do, ni ze, bikidas, tio, kon, le, go, tchadatokha. O, a, ni, di, ze, bikijen, na, na, aneshdi, dukosnshagin, nalni, nalni. Bigi, nte, jue, ah, di, kon, nalni, ho, da, kon, bandahuilne. Allah, jen, e, di, dikoin, nelte, na, e, bedatolna, jue, da, da, do, di, jin, jue, e, na, di. Nelte, kon, nijekene, nijedene, bedatolna. Yako, nishnde, adi, hane, do, kodo, le, Washington, de, sa, nijekondal, ndal, ingi, jue, e, beda, badahuilne. Aden, hadaino, shne, a, e, kon, di, sa, ne, e, mask chudal, nengi, do, a, ltsko, kon, ben, da, ni ti, nengi. E ben, da, noh, ti, shikero shina, ato, bicheni, khat. Ado, slado, do, bahazun, de, ya, di, aden, da, zsa, na, nasne, ta, da, ha, noh, da. Di, sa, a, ana, anile, di, kon, nijekene, nijedene, yadalte, otah, akhond, nijeshi, e, kodo, da, daholya, otah, di, noh, da, di, ne, nchara, khatani, tzeno, di, neshikero shina. Ado, kon, do, nijekene, nijedene, sa, nijedana, ta, chit. E, allah, damiliyajidoo ba, allah, nez, na, di, do ba, tebete, di, do ba, tsostet. Kon, e, nijekene, nijedene, ntsa, da, chit. Chra, e, allah, jen, tsis, e, nitsa, da, chit, krago, na, di, di, le, ki, nelte, e, kon, krago, e, nijekene, nijedene, nitsa. Di, na, old, de, so, e shee, kon, nijekene, nijedene, bat, tsudilze. Ako, ze, gi, jue, ze, hallo, do, ze, kon, shi, nchara, da, ztsi. E, do, kon, bandahuilne, di, jin, jue, ze, nijekje, kuda, yagi, le, Washington, do, ne, bichen, koliyagi, e. Allah, nez, na, di, do ba, tebhi, naste, e, allah, nez, na, di, do ba, naste, di, do ba, tebhi, damiliyajidoo ba, asla, nez, na, di, do ba, hasthati, do ba, tebhi. E, nelte, o, e, kon, di, nchara, da, ztsi, gi, shda, sha, tsdechni, gi, e, nijekekudalia. Ako, bada, ztsi, gi, ya, shi, e, allah, allah, da, nchara, ztsi, shi, e, na, kid. Jue, na, ke, e, da, nijedetneye, di, Pfizer, do, Moderna, dechni, nengi. Ako, ni, do, la, nijekonanal, ya, Johnson &amp; Johnson, yegi. Ako, e, e, gi, e, allah, de, ya, bedellne, da, nijekodo, ni, di, dukosnshagin, asta, e, ni, bela, zling, Washington, de. Akhond, di, kujje, Pfizer, dechni, nengi, do, Moderna, dechni, nengi. E, ye, go, bikijen, na, aneshdi, nalni, gi, 95% dechni, ya. Di, ni, bela, zlingi, a, allah, de, ya, kwa, tegi, Johnson &amp; Johnson, dechni, nengi. Do, e, 95%, ot, eda. Do, do, da, joo, shee, bikijen, na, anesda, akhond, a, 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 shee, bikijen, na, anesod. Ako, e, do, nijekje, koliya, e, na, na, ke, damiliyajidoo ba, tebhi, nez, na, di, nelte, o, nijekje, koliya, da, da. So, e shee, do, kon, a, ltsko, ze, nijekje, koliyagi, nijajaschane, asla, ge, e, do, bichilkha. So, kathao, Pfizer, Moderna, do, Johnson &amp; Johnson, e, khat, nijena, chasala, nijeshi, nhol, nengi, ta, noshse, nengi. Heila, shadotse, Pfizer, do, Moderna, e, na, ke, go, kha, zse. Di, Johnson &amp; Johnson, e, allah, go, jue, kodo, ya, daholne. E shee, do, joo, bantsa, da, khes, do, le, shee, ke, noh, shini. Do, kon, bada, ztsi, gi, ya, nishne, gi, e, allah, nez, na, di, do ba, dis, di, do ba, allah, damiliyajidoo ba. Ado, asla, nez, na, di, do ba, hasthati, di, do ba, tebhi, nelte, o, e, kon, nijekene, nijedene, bada, ztsi. Di, na, ke, go, bada, ztsi, gi, ya, nijekene, nijedene, e, ya, asla, di, do ba, allah, damiliyajidoo ba, asla, nez, na, di, do ba, tebhi. Nelte, o, e, kon, na, ke, e, bada, ztsi. Ako, e, ba, ke, nitsin, kodo, shikero, shidoshina, shidoshadotse. Do, e, a, a, shidesh, ada, dechnida, kon, shikero, e, shiduna, bichesht, nengi, do, shiduna, ba, shadotse, ta, noshse, nengi, jue, otah, e, di, biched, e, kha, od, nalni, gi. Kodo, e, nchara, ahen, suno, dechni, shidona, ke, de, shadotse. Jue, nijena, a, nchara, shlo, do, le, go, nchara, shadon, le, go, shandatle, ho, chadusha, di, da, chadatsi, go, da. Allah, ndatle, ho, kon, chadusha, kon, hane, nijekje, go, a, kon, e shee. E beni, che, e, kodo, ada, daholya, do, ye, go, da, dechno, ado, dechni, ta. Nijekmas, a, chudal, nchara, da, ztsin, de, ashon, nijela, do, tchale woshpet, chadakhis, shidodo, behazun, go, nasto, e beni na, da, nijedi, nishikero shina. Biched, e, kha, o, la, shee, e, kon, nijekene, nijedene, bada, do, zse, ot, end. Jue, tcha, e, ncharlshin, e, do, ba, ot, ita, di, ze, gi, tebhi, tebhi, zada, do, biyao. Ben, da, chegi, e, do ba, at, e, da, di, ze, gi, jue, ah, di, ndelkha. E beni na, e, tebhi, zada, do, ba, la, ba, nchara, gi, e, nchara. Ei binina, ei ceppi tzadah, do bala, bana chegi, ei nchaa hoti. Ei binina, nicha, nicha ze, dohini chi bi dasthi, aha di chudal. Jo kadeh xin ei, jo ndilcha ze, kadeh xin. Alne, dole, nchaltsin bich. Jo nchaltsin ei ya. Betsis, danlengi, do, do ye go, bichjepda, betsila, di ze. Ta daanoda. Hane, nichijjekundegi, ako nda, aha di indilcha hot, eshik, ei roxina. So ei on nichilpeha zin dole. Kudo hane, jijjekundel, vijjo di jin, ei koon azelind, danlengi, jijjehadastji. A do, Indian Health Services, jo do Navajo Department of Health, ajo ndadashigi. Doctor Jim, Doctor Captain Johnson, aniri ya, ei Doctor Hammond jijjehadzi. Binina ltsai, ei hinjijehadzigi, ei ya, a la hane, nichijjekuiilla. La xin ei, ako nda, aro denek, eji. Yehadzit, jo bilagan, ei inlind. Kudo xin shi, shidexa, Doctor Fowler, xin ei kudo, nichijjajashtana, i do lilldi. Yehadzig, iso a, da isonoltsan a shon. La ei a shon, di hane, Town Hall, inel, iho, ya, ta nicha nall. A do, a ye go, haten na, a na kye da tchada, yelki go, nda, ltscholte. La xin, tla nicha nashta, halon, da ei binina, ei ltsa. Kudo Doctor Hammond ichijj, a daotsi. A la, da istsala, started, iho, di Town Hall agi da di no. Ei binina, ei kudo, nichijj, hadzi, shik, ei roxina. So, a xin, so, kodo denek, eji, nichijjehadzit, dole. Do, di xin, a, atshano, na bilagan, eji, hane, nichijjekonanashliya, dole.
So, Eli, if you could go to the first slide. Thank you for joining us for the Thursday Town Hall. And a lot of listeners on, we appreciate you. There's a lot of information that we're sharing with you. Ladies and gentlemen, my people. And I just encourage you, please, to share that information with your family, with your friends. Telephone, WebEx. And if, if a lot of this is in English. If you're fluent in Navajo, you know, translate it to the elders, there's a lot of information. Because it's key, we gotta be transparent and we gotta be able to get that information out to our Navajo people, you know. I don't think this has ever been like this before. I mean, this is transparency of what's happening with this pandemic, to get everybody informed. With the situation at hand with this. Public health emergency. But we are seeing the numbers starting to decrease. So we're, you know, with the vaccinations that are happening. And with the percentage of people who got COVID-19. So those are the two factors that we look at. How many people got the virus already? How many people got vaccinated? Putting that together gives us an idea of reopening slowly, of course. The schools, the businesses, the government. And things like that, and you know, we, we gotta open up at some point. We can't just be in fear. I mean, all this information is given to you, the Navajo people. And now it's upon you to make some decisions for yourself and for your family. We can't just continue to keep the government closed. You know what to do, we all know what to do when we're out there. If you see somebody not wearing a mask, call them out on it. Put on your mask, because it is a law here on the Navajo Nation. So, the new numbers, as is mentioned earlier in Navajo, and then you see on the. On the Town Hall. As a PowerPoint, is the total confirmed cases, twenty-nine thousand seven hundred ninety-four. There was twenty new cases. Remember, we were in the single digits and in the teens these past few days. So let's not let up. I know some of us got our first shot, second shot. But that doesn't mean that we gotta stop doing what we're doing. It's easy to let down. We let down before and look at what happened. This whole country let down. And look at what happened. We gotta continue to wear our mask, wash our hands, use hand sanitizers. Six feet, social distance, stay at home as much as you can. You don't have to be told to stay at home. You know, the safest place to be is at home. You need to make an essential run, you make an essential run that will last you a few days. So that you don't go over there for popcorn and chips every day. You know, that, that's just what my, my dad would say, common sense. My mom, my dad would always say. A, a, baansan kes. Inaill inig. Do kunnago da. Ba kujnzinla, tchadagaho. La xin, ohot aha, hane, nichijjekudaliya. Aei naanitne, ben daanitjin dole. Di nallniye da, ato yahailniye da, ato ya daatjin de. Ei binina, ei kudo, nachahahni ni tsino, da di ne shik, eshimna. And then if you look at the total deaths, one thousand one hundred eighty-seven. Three new deaths in twenty-four hours. Our prayers go out to those families. And some of these are, are starting to trickle in, maybe two, three, four, five days late. Because, you know, some people are being tested. If they're, if someone passes away and is questionable. They are tested for COVID-19 too. And sometimes they find out that they're, they were positive, even though the. The individual may have not had symptoms. It might be, have been an accident. And then they take the, you know, the testing and they find out positive. So, you know, a lot of these cases are coming in late and we're doing, they're doing our very, their very best. And to keep these numbers updated. So if you go to the second slide there, again, you just see the progression. You can see now on the graph that we're way back to twenty, way on the far right side of the chart there, we're going down. And you know, it's, it's a combination of we doing the mask and mandates and staying at home and also vaccinations. So, you know, just to give you an understanding of what we're, what we're dealing with right now when it comes to schools. I know schools are, are itching to reopen. But here on the Navajo Nation, we have said that we are still in online learning. And so, you know, if you are not wanting your child to go to school. You have a choice to not have them go to school and do online courses. There's a lot of accountability measures here, ladies and gentlemen. Meaning that you elect school board members to these various schools. You know, you, you need to let the school board members know your concerns. And also let us know here. We don't know all the schools, we're a big nation. We need to know if there are concerns in the communities. So if you go to the next slide there, I wanna talk about the vaccination efforts. That are, that's been happening. We've, we've done great. It's like one in three, one in four of our Navajo people now are vaccinated. And that's a, a big, big percentage. Here for the Navajo Nation compared to the other states, you know. Yes, we got hit hard. We, the healthcare facilities are doing an outstanding job, all these service unit area staff. Doing these vaccination blitzs. Thank you Navajo people for your patience. I know that sometimes there was long lines. But if you look at the US, and this was on, on Monday. The numbers for the US total doses distributed, ninety-six million four hundred and two thousand two hundred and ninety. And then of those ninety-six plus million, seventy-two million eight hundred and six. Thousand one hundred and eighty have been given. And put into the arms of our people throughout this country. And the next statistic is number of people receiving their second doses. Twenty-three million six hundred and ninety-eight thousand six hundred and twenty-seven have received their second dose. So US, eighty-four percent of what's out there in vaccines, eighty-four percent have gone into the arms of the US population. Now let's move over to the Navajo Nation. This is as of March third, twenty-one. Yesterday, last evening. So, total doses that were given to Navajo, one hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred and sixty. Total doses administered, that means how many were actually given, put into the arms. One hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight. Now of the one hundred and eighty-seven plus thousand total doses distributed. Fifty-one thousand five hundred and eight are the second doses. So that's pretty good. Right now, that's over half of a hundred thousand people that are fully got their doses. Fully vaccinated COVID-19. Now, percent administered is seventy-five point five percent as of three, three twenty-one. And that's because we got a big shipment of second doses. A lot of people are going to be getting their second doses this week, next week. We got a big shipment of that. And we also got a shipment of the Johnson and Johnson, the new vaccine that was given approval by the CDC. That one there only gives one dose. I'm sorry, one shot, yes. And we received twenty, twenty-seven hundred that's coming in for that. Johnson and Johnson vaccine. So now we're gonna have three, we got Moderna, we got Pfizer, now we got Johnson and Johnson. And that's why it's a little lower than last week, we were in the ninety percent range. We got new shipments of doses and you know, Navajo is gonna be doing a great outreach and getting news into the arms of our people. So this is just a comparison. If you look at the next slide. That just gives you an idea, the chart there, of the vaccine distribution and administration. And there you look at the. The graph. The blue there, the top line, is the total doses distributed. And the green, I'm sorry. The green is the total doses administered. The blue is the total doses distributed. That have been given to the nation. And the purple there is the total people completing their second doses. So just to give you a chart from January all the way to February. An increase in the number of people getting vaccinated. So wanted to let everyone know those statistics. And lastly, I just wanna say to everybody, congratulations. For being a part of this big movement of vaccine distribution. Of course, not everybody's gonna want it. But those of you that took it, you know, you got the first dose, some of you are waiting for the second dose. And you know, it's just maybe a normal part of the society in the future. You know, we got flu shots, right, every year. Sometimes some people don't, some, some people take it. Scientists are talking about, maybe this is an annual. Vaccination that has to occur for COVID-19, because it's here. And there's different variants that was talked about earlier too. And you know, as we go into the future, the best thing that we all can do is pray for one another. And also to follow these very strict protocols that we put in place for you and for all of us here on the Navajo Nation. There's a lot of traffic out there. People are wanting to get back some normal day-to-day operations. And we see the numbers, we get all our public health professionals together and we talk. And they recommend certain things. So come March fifteenth. You know, we're gonna be moving from the red status to the orange status, which means that it's gonna be less restrictive. And as we move into the less restrictive, I'm not saying a hundred percent open and all that like Texas did, no. We're gonna gradually lessen the restrictions. And that's where we all come in, all of us Navajo people. We just gotta continue to do what we have been doing all along. Wearing masks, social distances, washing our hands and staying home as much as we can. I mean, those are the four factors. And if you do not do one of the four, you are putting yourself in a very. A very, you know, tough, tough place. Because you can get the, even though you're, you're, you're vaccinated, you can carry that back virus and spread it. And remember, our children, eighteen and below, sixteen and below, have not gotten vaccinated. It's not like everybody's gotten vaccinated here on Navajo, we go back to no one know. You know, the scientists are still studying the effects of the vaccines for the young children. And so we need to not let down, continue to do what we're doing that kept these numbers down. And you know, we'll gradually reopen certain segments of society, because you know, we're, we're. We can't just stay shut down forever. We have to look at our economy, we gotta look at back, look back towards our government. Reopening, because you all are demanding that services be provided to you. I mean, a year is a long time. Some of you haven't had your home site lease process documents going, go through. The, the office there. And many others, you know. We did our very best to continue the flow of government operation throughout this pandemic. But it was difficult. And then we gotta keep those protocols in place, those CDC protocols that we've been sharing to each and every one of you. So don't let up, is the message. Do not let up, ladies and gentlemen. Let's continue to get after our hurt people around us, wear a mask. Wash your hands, give them a hand sanitizer. Say, excuse me, you're a little bit too close, you know. When we're talking to one another. And encourage our family members to stay home as much as they can. That means doing everything you can, when you go into town, get everything you need and start planning for the long run. Four days, five days, so you don't have to continue to go back to high populated areas. And we also need to say to our family members, now is not the time to come home, still. If we do all those, we'll see the low numbers that we've been seeing lately. And I wanna say thank you so much to the Navajo people for honoring and respecting the scientists, the healthcare professionals and your leaders. You know, these chapters, chapter houses are doing food and supply distributions right now, they're doing it non-contact way. Just be patient with them. These are the CARES Act monies that are coming in from the federal government that we had to fight for. You know, at one point, there was not even one penny for tribal communities until our congressmen and women. Put a provision in there that they should put twenty billion dollars in for Native American. And the net seven hundred and fourteen million came to the Navajo Nation. So thank your senator, thank your representatives for putting that provision in there. If it wasn't for them, we would have received not one penny. So that's what, that money is, is being divvied out to everybody right now in, in terms of PPEs and water and food and supplies. Weather is getting warm uh, now too, spring is before us. So don't let down, don't let down, that's the message. So thank you so much, God bless each and every one of you. I hope you uh, share the presentation with your loved ones and your friends. Uh, and I know we will get through this by working together. God bless you and God bless our great Navajo Nation. Let me turn the time over to our executive director for the Navajo Department of Health, Dr. Jill Jim. And she's been doing the lead on the HCOC. And also uh, HCOC is the Health Command Operations Center. So once her video comes on, I'll transition to her. And also the Unified Command Group that has uh, all these various partners, federal partners, facilitating those discussions, making those recommendation uh, to us as leaders uh, to keep our Navajo people safe. So are you ready to go, Dr. Jill Jim? All right, well, she's probably on another call, we've been just juggling so many calls lately. So let me turn the time over to Captain Johnson from the Navajo Area IHS. Captain Johnson, are you, are you on?
Uh, yes, sir.
All right, take it away. Thank you so much for Navajo Area IHS and their team, uh, Roslin, uh, Sod, the director, as well as uh, Dr. Loretta Christensen and the awesome team at the Navajo Area IHS as well for their hard work. So if you could, Captain, let the Navajo Area IHS leadership and staff know that Navajo people do appreciate their hard work, so take it away, Captain.
Okay, I appreciate that, uh, those comments, sir, and, and thank you for the time. And, and again, uh, here we are on March the fourth, um, as we continue to move along. And again, I'm, I'm Captain Brian Johnson, serving as the uh, Acting uh, Deputy Area Director for Navajo Area Indian Health Service. Uh, worked in St. Michael's, Arizona with Navajo Area IHS. And uh, working not only with our uh, federally managed uh, hospitals and healthcare uh, facilities, but also uh, working with all of our tribal, um, probably managed uh, programs across uh, the, the Navajo Nation. Um, and so we just appreciate the continued partnership. And I want to thank uh, Dr. Hammett and Vice President Nez, President Nez this morning for uh, sharing the information that you have. It's, it's, uh, it's nice to see and hear the comments um, about where we're at uh, in this pandemic and, and how things are looking, and as well as some of the precautionary statements. Um, I think uh, we're very fortunate to, you know, here, here locally on the Navajo Nation to have a venue where we can uh, really reach out directly to the public and be able to share that real-time information in, in terms of how we're doing and thanking the, the Navajo people, uh, Navajo leaders as well for, for the things they're doing across the Navajo Nation in terms of protecting and, and protecting each other. Um, again, we, we continue to um, well, work with the Navajo Nation uh, Health Command Operations Center. Uh, sometimes you'll hear that referred to as the Navajo Nation HCOC. It's basically the operational uh, component of the uh, COVID-19 response. And so um, the area, the Navajo Area Indian Health Service with all of its um, service units and tribal partners as well. Um, we work directly with uh, Dr. Jill Jim and others uh, to make sure that we're communicating, communicating across the board here within the nation. I, I always like to just mention that we do have a healthcare system on the Navajo Nation. And um, we do share information, best practices. We, we share any changes or updates that's going on in terms of having daily calls within the Operations Center. Um, just to make sure that we're all on board and, and not leaving any one uh, health facility or the services for the Navajo people uh, behind. We want to make sure that um, our services are across the board, are uh, as equitable as possible in, in providing the best customer service. Um, I'm, I'm just wanted to make a few comments that, of course, with uh, the current situation, you know, uh, the COVID-19 vaccination process and vaccine process continues to be certainly a major priority uh, for the Indian Health Service, not only for the Navajo Area Indian Health Service, but nationally for the Indian Health Service. And when I refer to the Indian Health Service, I'm not only talking about IHS as a federal agency, but I'm also talking about all of our tribal partners uh, within that, uh, that, that works beside us and, and helps us uh, you know, become more aware to also be, uh, to, to provide support. Um, it's really uh, outstanding partnerships across, across the board and we do appreciate that. Um, one of the things I wanted to mention was that if we look at IHS nationally, again, including both the federal sites and, and tribally managed sites, um, more than uh, five hundred thousand uh, doses of vaccine has been administered across the IHS system uh, since those vaccines arrived in mid-December. And um, I think uh, that, that's, that's really great that we've hit and actually exceeded the five hundred thousand uh, vaccine uh, mark nationally. And um, I mean, that, that actually goes, you know, even upwards into Alaska, uh, down across Navajo through, from California to the East Coast, uh, into the Midwest, um, that, that over five hundred thousand. And, and the IHS is aiming to reach one million um, actual vaccinations uh, by the end of March. So um, we're, we're hoping and we're, and we're striving to do that. Of course, here on the nation, we, we work with uh, President Nez and the leaders to identify um, what is our goals for the month. Uh, we do that as well, as some of you have heard in these uh, Facebook sessions. And so at multiple levels, we're looking at uh, how, what is our target? What are we aiming to achieve in terms of these vaccines? Um, again, I was excited uh, this morning to hear uh, Dr. Hammett speak a little bit about the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And uh, that it's, it was approved on February twenty-seventh for emergency use by the FDA. And of course, uh, we've, we've mentioned this and it becomes the third vaccine that we have available in our toolbox to fight the COVID-19 virus. And, and we're happy that we're, um, we just have one more tool that we can use to, to fight this thing and to uh, remain vigilant as, as we move forward. So now, whenever we talk about uh, vaccines, we talk about Moderna vaccine, we talk about Pfizer vaccine, and we talk now about Johnson and Johnson. And we'll continue to monitor the national uh, focus of perhaps additional vaccines but uh, getting uh, emergency use approved, uh, you know, in the future as well. Uh, but for now, we will definitely, we're, we're happy that we started receiving the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And uh, we're relying on our uh, healthcare professionals to identify how best to utilize uh, this particular tool. Um, as it's been commented on, uh, Johnson and Johnson's a single dose. Um, there are, there are some advantages, disadvantages to that one as compared to uh, the other uh, vaccines. Uh, but, but all of them have their strengths and um, they're all uh, effective, no matter which vaccine that we take. Um, they're all effective and they can all reduce um, the, the severity. And you know, it doesn't, doesn't, just by getting a vaccine, as President Nez had mentioned, doesn't mean that we still can't get the uh, the virus, can't catch the virus or can't carry the virus. Um, what it, what it means is if you do get exposed, that it can greatly reduce and possibly prevent uh, one from uh, having uh, you know, severe disease, uh, more like minor disease, uh, and, and it's very helpful in that fashion. And hopefully it will prevent. And so um, we do, we do still encourage and we talk with the Centers for Disease Control. We talk with other health authorities across the, uh, the United States. And it is still vaccination with the COVID-19 uh, vaccine, whether it's Johnson and Johnson, Pfizer, Moderna, uh, it, they're still all effective in what they do. And uh, we're just happy that, and, and we feel blessed that we have these tools in our, in our toolbox. Um, and again, I, I just want to thank, I always make sure that we thank our Navajo people because um, without uh, your vigilance, without your desire to protect yourselves, your family, your loved ones, your neighbors, we wouldn't be where we're at in terms of these, these achievements, in terms of the vaccine um, numbers that we've been able to accomplish as a team. And uh, President Nez shared some of those. And while I was talking about, you know, the national scene uh, within IHS, where, where five hundred thousand vaccines have been uh, uh, I guess administered to date. When we look at our local Navajo, over a hundred and forty-one, almost a hundred and forty-two thousand of those five hundred are here on Navajo, which, which speaks highly of what's happening here uh, on Navajo Nation. And um, again, um, it's almost daily that we do get inquiries from uh, media sources and others wanting to know a little bit more about the process that was used locally. Um, because people know that, that we do have our challenges in a, in a rural setting. We, we, we have challenges with weather, we have uh, challenges with the distances between our health facilities and our, our population that we serve. But yet, we're able to have such a high rate of vaccine administration, um, over seventy-five percent. And, and that number continues to change. Um, given that, that we receive allocations of vaccine weekly, um, you know, the number of uh, the administered vaccines drops down when we get a new batch, because we haven't had an opportunity yet to uh, to administer the vaccine. And then in, during each week, we tried to build that percentage of administered vaccine back up. And then we follow the same routine the next week. So uh, usually on, on Sundays, we, we know what would be coming to us. Um, and on Mondays, with the idea of receiving the vaccine on Mondays and, and getting that out again to our customers and our patients across the system. And uh, it's, it's worked very well, very well for us. Now, I just want to make a comment that while we are um, continuing to work as a team across the healthcare system to uh, provide the vaccine and we will continue to do that, whether that's with special uh, vaccination clinics in local communities such as um, uh, whether it be in a uh, in, in, in drive-through parking air, uh, parking lots, where we've had those onsite at our facilities as well as offsite. But we also uh, schedule those uh, vaccine appointments in our clinics as well. And we, we continue to follow the prioritization schedule as set out by the Navajo Nation. Um, and, and we certainly had input on that process and we appreciate that opportunity as well. But I also want to talk just a little bit about uh, COVID-19 testing, because this is and continues to be uh, something of importance. Uh, we have to monitor um, our local communities in terms of uh, our testing and, and how many tests that we're uh, performing, we, we still need to test. Um, we, I mean, we're still providing that service and will continue to provide that service. And it's important uh, in that we need to understand if we have um, ten people, for example, come to a facility and they all are tested for COVID-19, um, there's a difference if all ten test positive or if only one tests positive. It's, it's important for us to see those numbers, to understand what's going on in our communities. Um, we've talked about how the number of cases of COVID-19 continues to decrease and, and we're, we're in a, 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 a good position, much, 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 much better than what we were before, just a few weeks ago. Um, but it's important that we continue to monitor, because we do know that we still have community spread. And um, and that's why it's so important that we monitor what our test results are, not only for the individual patient, but for the system uh, in general, so that we can share, you know, is uh, our fifty percent of our tests coming back positive? Or is it five percent of our tests are coming back positive? Those are the types of things that we monitor. And I just want to again encourage folks, um, the testing is still there, it's still available. We um, certainly recommend um, getting tested. Um, if, if you feel that uh, you need uh, that and uh, we're, want to just reassure the public that we're there for you in, in that way. And we will continue to, to do that over the, over the weeks to come. Um, today, I'm, I'm not going to go over, I think uh, I think Dr. Hammett did a very nice job. I typically touch on the variants, just a touch in terms of making sure that our public understands that, that there are variants out there and this, the changing of the virus and, and how it's learning to live in its environment. And um, I think Dr. Hammett did a very nice job this morning, uh, speaking to that. And so um, I'll, I'll reserve that time. But I also just wanted to, to mention to the public that um, you know, again, we continue, as we know what vaccine is available when, we, we are continuing to schedule uh, the vaccine clinics. Again, whether those are at our uh, health facilities or if they're at a special location in a community, we continue to set those schedules up and those do change routinely. So again, I know it can be frustrating, uh, we're, we're doing the best we can. Uh, whenever we do receive um, more and more doses of vaccine, we adjust accordingly on the schedule to try to move things forward. So I do recommend uh, keeping an eye out for the schedules, keeping an eye out. Um, if you're a Facebook user on the uh, Office of President and Vice President's page, they typically have the schedules uh, posted. And um, it's important to, to keep tuned in on that. And, and also to contact your local facility if, if you don't know or if you're unsure of something, don't hesitate to call, um, please call our facilities and, and they will uh, help you and provide us and directions and instruction on what's available and when. Um, I think it's uh, again, I just want to reiterate, I, I know President Nez did a very nice job as well as uh, Dr. Hammett this morning, uh, talking about um, what we have to do at this phase. There's conversation, as was, as was mentioned by President Nez, of moving to um, the code orange, um, from red to orange on, on the fifteenth of this month. And um, I think it's important while we, while, while we do see some potential lessening of um, restrictions, so to speak, it's so important to make sure that we continue to remain vigilant and, and protect ourselves. Again, the, the vaccine's great and it does a wonderful job in terms of effectiveness. However, we must continue to do, to do those things that we were doing before the vaccine arrived. And those things, again, wearing a mask, making sure you're wearing it properly, uh, making sure your loved ones are wearing that, uh, particularly in areas where uh, others are at. Um, if you're, if you're in a business environment or if you're in a retail store, just making sure that you're protecting yourself, um, keeping your distance. I think uh, President Nez mentioned this morning about it's okay if someone, if you're in a, if you're in a store of some type and uh, someone is getting close to you in terms of, you know, distance. Um, it's okay to, to say, hey, you know, please respect the distance. Um, we, we need to keep that six feet uh, distance and continue to respect that. Um, it's, there's, there's a way to do that in a good way, a positive way, don't have to yell at them, but, but it, but maybe just um, ask them nicely, politely, because it helps them as a reminder as well. Um, washing your hands, you know, that's, that's just a public health principle, that's always good. And I think uh, we do a great job here on the nation um, of sharing that message. And I think the population does an outstanding job. Um, this has been my experience in the past, um, in various capacities that I've worked, that I've seen, I've seen this firsthand. And so washing your hands, wearing your mask and watching your distance. And again, avoiding large groups. I think it's going to be uh, tricky in the, in the months to come where um, where we feel these uh, you know, hopefully uh, some lessening of the restrictions. But it's going to be very tempting to go to larger public gatherings. Um, it's going to be very tempting to hold large birthday parties and, and family gatherings. And we just have to encourage people, please remain vigilant, because um, it's right now, it's in our hands. We're the ones who will make the difference in the decisions we make today, uh, what we'll experience tomorrow. And so ea- each day, we should do what we can do to protect each other and take care of each other. And with that said, I'm gonna um, turn the time over, I believe we may be going- And with that said, I'm going to turn the time over. I believe we may be going to Dr. Jim at this point. Are you available, Dr. Jim? Okay, not hearing any. I'll go back towards Dr. Fowler.
Thank you, Captain Johnson. I appreciate all that you and the area office does for us. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Captain Johnson.
Oh, I can hear it. To the first, Dr. Fowler. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Dr. Jim.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for listening and also for the updates. I know we had a lot of information today. In some cases, you can amelip investigating between five to 10 people at an event.
Oh, no. No, I can hear it. I hear it. I hear it. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you to leadership. Thank you to all the leaders. We have our council delegates, we have various board members, school systems, enterprises, healthcare facilities, healthcare professions, you know, each and every one of you. Thank you. And most importantly, for all those that are tuning in, thank you. We do the best that we can to continue to provide the information to you all on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I could be, I need to, Dr. Hammett. Do I need to be? I could, I could. I could. I could be. I could be. I could. I could be. Be. I could be. I could. Be. I could be. Be. I could be. Be. I could. I could. Oh, I could. I could be. I could be. We continue to support online learning. Do I? I could. I could be. I could. Safety. Be. I could. I could. I could. I could. Do I? I could be. I could be. I could. I could be. I could be. I could be. I could be. Of course, the. I. I. I see. At the. I see. But she. She. I. I'm. Though. I. Although, I can. Although, I'm. Of course, I. Although, I can. I can. But I. Although, I. The. I can. That. Of course, I. Be. The. Who.